Okay, we'll call the meeting of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission to order. This is our regular meeting of April 4th, 2017. We have a motion for the approval of the April 4th, 2017 agenda if it's not been amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next thing we have is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on March 7th, 2017. If there are no corrections, we'll entertain a motion for their acceptance.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to accept the minutes of March 4th, I'm sorry, March 7th, 2017, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes in favor. Next item is the financial report for January and February of 2017. Schrader with staff.
Last month, there was a part of Januaries in there, so we kind of put both January and February in here. So, you know, at January, you're just over half of the fiscal year, and through February, so you should be somewhere around most expenses or revenues around the 60 percent. Certain items, you know, come in earlier in the year, like subscriptions and things like that, but for the most part, we are on track.
So, um, this is Do Not, and my question about the financial report was, usually we get full financial reports that are like several pages, so this is only the parts that we have to, when we need to pay attention to and approve?
Um, that is my, I don't know if the software system is different now that I asked about that, and that's what they said, is the report that it generates is now too. So, I think it, I don't know that there's necessarily less information there, I think it might be primarily kind of more condensed and not as much wasted white space.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Now we come to the time for oral presentations, and that's anyone who is in the room would like to bring up a subject that is not on the agenda for today, to come to the podium and give us your name, your address, and a brief description of what your concern is. In case there's no one, we'll move on to the agenda items. Hearing item, request by Mark White Construction on behalf of Fusion Real Estate LLC for a site plan amendment to the CP Plan Commercial District to allow for the construction of an 80 by 150 foot, 12,000 square foot commercial building and a 51 stall parking lot located to the north of 1730 West Ridgeway Avenue. We have a staff report. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you have the Patty McGee statement. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, and aerial photo were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on March 22nd, 2017." We have a motion to receive and place this notice on file.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Do Not, seconded by Do Not, I'm sorry, Eric, and seconded by Harold to place that on file. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Chair votes in favor. Okay, the meeting to the hearing is now open.
Okay, this is starting off with staff. Request by Mark White Construction on behalf of Fusion Real Estate LLC for a site plan amendment to the CP Plan Commercial District to allow construction of an 80 foot by 150 foot, 12,000 square foot commercial building and a 51 stall parking lot located in north 1730 Ridgeway Avenue. Now, the request would not appear to have a negative impact surrounding the neighborhood or land use. Currently, there is an 18,000 square foot building under construction at the northwest corner of Ridgeway and Provision Parkway, just to the southwest, and a 12,000 foot square foot gymnastics studio in construction to the north of the site. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic movement in the area. The area is served by Ridgeway Avenue, which is a four lane roadway that is classified as minor arterial. Currently, groundwork is done for the Provision Parkway, however, it's not been paved. Once completed, the new road will be classified as local street. Highway 63 is also a half mile to the west and classified as a principal arterial. A five foot Portland cement concrete sidewalk is shown in front of the building, paralleling Provision Parkway. As subdivision develops, sidewalks will be further extended into the area. The area in question is zone R3, was zoned R3, whereas R3 multiple residence district, R3 CZ conditional zoning district, R4 multiple residence district, and C2 commercial district, and was changed to CP Plan Commercial District in April, on April 11th, 2016. Surrounding land uses, future Blackhawk Gymnastics and Zone CP Commercial District vacant development ground and single family uses along James Street, Zone R3 multiple residence district, R3 CZ conditional zoning district, R2 CZ conditional zoning district, and R2 one and two family residence district to the north, to the south, United Medical Park, Zone R4ZZ conditional zoning district, to the east, Waterloo Memorial Park Cemetery, Zone R3 multiple residence district, and to the west, existing commercial development, vacant development grounds, Zone C2 Commercial District and R4 multiple residence district. There is also a large amount of development land further to the west, Zone Agriculture and Industry. The area is comprised of professional and commercial office development with recent development of a commercial strip center at 1850 Ridgeway Avenue in 2015, which houses two restaurants, professional offices, and retail businesses. Currently, there's an 18,000 square foot building under construction at the northwest corner of Ridgeway and Provision Parkway along with a new gymnastics facility to the north, directly across three is United Medical Park, which started in the late 1990s, multiple expansions and new buildings over the year. If approved, the applicant will need to submit a storm water drainage detention plan to the engineering department prior to issuing some any building permits, but subdivision was designed to have a communal detention area to the west of tract B. There's a sanitary sewer line located in the center of Provision Parkway, eight inch water line located along the east side of Provision Parkway, and storm sewer located west of Provision Parkway, and an 18 inch storm sewer and four inch drain tile located within West Ridgeway Avenue directly to south of the property in question. The CP Plan Commercial Districts tend to design to provide a means for residential or compatible commercial development of tracts of land on a unit basis, allowing greater flexibility and diversification of land uses and building locations to conventional single lot method. It is, it is the intent of the basic principles of good land use plan to be maintained and sound zoning standards be set forth in the zoning ordinance concerning orderly growth and development, traffic patterns, and compatible design and use be preserved. The ideals of the planned commercial districts now from mixed-use commercial categorization on the future land use map within the comprehensive plan. Mixed commercial areas work to direct developments into areas of transition from commercial to residential based on current developments. Commercial uses be compatible design to blend with the built or planned environment, and shall incorporate the following elements into their design, building facade, landscaping, signage, screening, and site orientation and layout. The proposed structure shows numerous materials being used on the outside, which range from flat metal wall panel system, split face concrete block, and ribbed metal wall system. It appears from the building elevations that the flat panel wall system will be on portions of the west and south walls of the building, the split face concrete block on the west and south walls, although the proposed can, along with the canopy, and ribbed panel system will be on all four walls. There will be two large windows on the west elevation along with the entrance door and three large windows on the south wall. The floor plan shows 4,800 and 48 square feet of building devoted to the Five Dance Studios, 1,545 square feet dedicated to retail, customer lounges, waiting rooms, and remaining 5,607 square feet, the building being devoted to restrooms, storage, mechanical offices, and employee lounge. It also indicated that the building layout plan, that it has patron use occupancy of 223 persons, and the zoning ordinance requires for place assembly that there be one place parking spot for each four person maximum occupancy, which in case would be 56 parking spots. As mentioned, 51 parking spaces have been shown, which is five fewer than required. However, the CP Plan Commercial District allows for flexibility in parking when approved as far as the site plan amendment request. At tech review, there was concern about the parking spots since classes are usually 45, 60 minutes, and most parents are, many to some, most parents will wait for their children. There is a possibility adding parking on one side of Provision Parkway, but that's not been determined yet. And the applicant is here, and he'll talk more about the parking. The site plan shows the proposed building to have 30 foot side yard setback for the north property line, 35 yard rear yard setback for the east property line setback requirements for CP district are that of the C2 district, which are five feet side yard setback and 35 foot rear yard setback. The front of the building is well beyond the 20 foot required setback, and the south side property building is approximately 70 feet from the southern link park side property line. Also, at the highest building will be 18 feet, well below the maximum 48 feet high limit for the zoning district. The site plan amendment shows existing fire hydrants located on the north property line, south property line, along next to the sidewalk, and there is a proposed fire hydro located on the south side of the building near overhead door. It should be noted that Lori Glover from the Blackhawk Community Emergency Management Division expressed concern about the lack of safe emergency assembly space and not only this building, but others are being built in the area. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for a site plan amendment in the CP Plans Commercial District be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to be compatible, will be, appear to be compatible with the surrounding area, which is comprised commercial and professional office development. The request would not appear to have a negative impact surrounding the area. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular and pedestrian traffic in the area, subject to the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera, except if specifically altered by approval of the site plan amendment.
Okay, are there any questions for staff?
Yes, this is Do Not. My question is, the concerns that were outlined in the tech review notes, have those been addressed?
Which ones specifically are you?
I have to flip back to the page. Okay. Well, um, it says that, it says, even in the tech review notes, it says that Lori Glover, I mispronounced her name, but she was expressing issues with where the patient, where the patrons of the business would go in, in the event of a tornado, so that was also part of the staff report. You don't, it identified you by your name, but you noted that the facility would be short five parking spaces, we already discussed that. And the issue is with the fire hydrants, and the fact that there was not a drainage plan in place, and I think that was, some of that was also discussed in the staff report.
Well, as far as the emergency, it's not in our ordinance that they specifically have to have one, although they talked about, and the applicant will talk more about that, but basically they, locker rooms, restrooms, that's considered a standard where it is, but yeah, it's not specifically covered in the zoning ordinance right now.
So there are, there are rooms, there are rooms within the facility that would be protected from tornadoes sometimes?
Yeah. I have a more general question relating to that, to that section. Is that, is this a new, or do they attend tech meetings normally, or, you know, I, we haven't seen this noted, in my opinion, previously, is this?
This is Schrader with staff. Lori Glover is the director of the Blackhawk County Emergency Management Agency. She's been in that position, I don't know how many years, but for a while now. She has brought that issue up in the past from time to time, I think it has been a while. She's brought it up before on residential projects, particularly multi-family or kind of higher density residential projects, you know, kind of suggesting that there should be code requirement that they're either, you know, have a basement or, you know, absent a basement, some sort of specifically designated storm shelter. But yeah, there's, you know, John mentioned there's nothing in the zoning ordinance, and there wouldn't be, that wouldn't be the spot for it, but, you know, there potentially could be in building code, but the building code does not have a requirement. If a facility decides to put in some form of a storm shelter, something that's going to be specifically designated as a storm shelter, then they have code requirements on, you know, what it has to, you know, be to meet those specific standards, but there is no building code requirement that forces a facility to have a storm shelter. So, you know, I understand the point, but it would be, kind of be our, you know, thought to be cautious about adding that as a requirement without it being, you know, generally listed for all, or all development or all of a certain type of development, like assembly within the building code.
Well, I just think it would be generally, this is Do Not again, but I think it would be generally a good thing to think about having a storm shelter or a basement or an interior room protective of tornadoes, because this is Iowa. This is not, you know, somewhere that doesn't have that issue to be in consideration, so that should be.
So I guess, what would be the procedure for him to approach the building department to do that? That's out of our scope, correct?
Yeah, well, I was just making a general statement.
Right, but I mean, I think that is a good idea, so how would you do that?
Um, I mean, that is certainly something that anyone can, you know, voice their suggestion to the building official. The building, building official participates in the national level code review annually. They look at suggested changes to the building codes, and the building officials organization, you know, takes a vote on that for what changes get incorporated into the building code, so that, you know, that is something that potentially could be looked at. It is something that I'm sure is, you know, some areas are maybe more prone than other areas. I think that is something that, in low density residential, we've still seen a preponderance of development have basements, but not all. And on higher density, that certainly is more common, that you see them not build basements, and that has been more the trend for commercial development, to not have basements just because of the costs associated with it. So, you know, I think the other factor in that maybe is the, even though there's nothing in the building code that requires what is specifically designated as a storm shelter, you know, I think the code does have lots of safety requirements into it, including wind load requirements that aren't necessarily going to, you know, cause your building to be standing if a tornado hits it directly, but I think the level of, you know, protection that new construction has is definitely better than what codes of old were.
Okay, I had one more question.
Sure.
On the, and this is a separate question from previous, but the comprehensive land use section on page 13 in the packet, it was saying that the proposed use would not be, the proposed use would not be in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area, and it noted that another developer or another entity had purchased a budding land from the cemetery. Now, is that, that, that the Fusion Studio would not be in conformance, is that an issue with planning staff?
It is not an issue. The City of Waterloo uses its future land use map as a guide, not necessarily as a, okay, a specific development is not consistent with the future land use map, so therefore it, it's not allowed. The City of Waterloo uses it a little differently, as more of a general guide, and we recognize that there are areas where, okay, this was shown on the future land use map as green, if you, I guess our map's out, it's back here if anyone wants to look at it, but, as green, because generally, you know, open space type uses, including cemeteries, were put on the map as green, and this was some excess land that the cemetery had, so it was, of course, you know, appropriately labeled as green on the future land use map when it was owned by the cemetery. The cemetery sold it off. It should probably now get updated, but we don't update our future land use map all that often. We've usually done it every few years, and we're in the works on doing a complete overhaul to the entire comp plan, which will include the future land use map. So hopefully, we'll get that process started here relatively soon, and that'll be one of the things we'll need to do, is kind of clean up that future land use map for little discrepancies like that, but not a concern.
Because in previous packets and previous meeting materials, you've actually had that. What you've just explained here would actually be in the packet, so I was looking for that passage, and since it wasn't, since it wasn't in the packet, I thought I'd ask the question.
Yep. And the other thing you talked about was parking. The, as currently being calculated, the development is being shown with a five stall deficiency in parking. The site is zone CP Plan Commercial District, and the CP district does have wording that does provide for flexibility in parking, so the development can be approved with a deficiency of five stalls. You know, that is something, you know, obviously at the tech committee, there was a little bit of discussion about that, and, you know, I don't know if concern is the right word or not, but just kind of that question of if they're going to short themselves on parking and where that parking might go if the site is full, depending on what ends up being allowed for on-street parking on Provision Parkway. And Provision Parkway is not even built yet. I mean, it was part of a plat, and it's, they've got, you know, the groundwork done for it, but it'll be getting constructed here soon this spring, but, and that's something the applicant is here, he might be able to kind of talk about the parking and their thoughts on if the proposed, what is it, 51 stalls is, you know, if they're pretty confident it's sufficient to meet their needs.
And I don't know if I asked this question previously, I don't remember, but were they going to be required by the engineering department to install storm water drainage and detention plan?
So this subdivision, it's a, you can see on the aerial photo I put on the screen, I think it was a six slot subdivision, if I remember right, included a tract on the west side of the subdivision that is designed to be the regional detention facility for the entire subdivision. So the engineering department will, will have to review basically their drainage plan for how they're getting their runoff into that detention facility. So that was just kind of a note. They haven't submitted anything yet, and engineering will have to review that, but that's not untypical, you know, that they, you know, normally, they provide fairly, you know, generalized site plans and, you know, fairly detailed, but not full-designed civil drawings at the point at which they're going through a site plan amendment and get the approvals, then they'll complete the full-designed civil plans, which will have all of that detail. But, so they don't have to do onsite detention, they just have to get it to that regional detention.
So that's not an issue for us approving or not approving?
No, that should not be an issue for this.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, this is Tyson. That area on the map there off to the right, which is property in question and going to your right, is that the cemetery, or is that?
Yeah, yes, so, yep, yep. So the area in question that's, you know, highlighted in red there on that map, and the area to the north and south of that was originally part of the cemetery land as well, that the cemetery sold to the developer, but yeah, everything to the east of the property line of the property in question is what's still owned by the cemetery.
All right.
Any other questions?
This is Gustafson. My question is, going back to what Eric brought up, do we need to specifically put as a condition the submission of a storm drainage and detention plan? I know that it's lumped in your, your one sentence catch-all phrase, but I just want to make sure that we have everything in place that we need.
Personally, I think we're covered, because number one, even if we had no conditions whatsoever, that's a requirement of the code of ordinances now anyway, so it would be fully enforceable by the engineering department without a condition, but then in addition to that, we do like to have that kind of catch-all condition that notes it'll meet all codes, including, you know, drainage, landscaping, just to kind of, it, it's not really needed from a, see here, it says you have, it's more of a informational for applicants and other interested parties to make, make sure they're kind of aware, there are some other regulations that come into play. So it doesn't necessarily hurt, but I don't think it would be needed.
Well, can we even get a building permit without it?
No, the, to get a building permit, it requires sign off on the engineering department, and the engineering department would not sign off without the required drainage information.
I guess my concern is, and maybe it's misplaced is, you know, I don't want, after the tech review, when the, the engineering department says, "We need this, this, and this," and then we don't specifically make that as part of our recommendation, are we kind of being disingenuous to the engineering department by, you know, just kind of lumping it all together and saying, "Oh, and by the way, you need to do this, this, and this."
Right.
All right, Eric Thorsten, CD engineer. We do like to see it in that condition that Eric mentioned at the end, that may, everybody's aware of it, and that's really the reason they absolutely can't get a building permit of any kind until those things are approved by us and we sign off, but this is really to make developers and anybody else that's interested aware that those, or those ordinances and things do apply.
Okay.
So it's kind of informational, but it's good to have here. We definitely believe that's a good thing.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Any other questions for staff? I see the applicant is here, is there anything you would like to say?
Other than thanks for everybody being here, I'm not sure.
Why don't you come to the podium, in case anybody has a question for you? Give, give, would you, I'm sorry, would you please give us your name and address too, for the record?
Yes, my name is Mark White, Mark White Construction, 625 Stephan Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
And yeah, I'm just here to present whatever I can to help you guys out with the, with the meeting, but I guess I didn't have anything specifically to state at this point.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, this is Tyson again. And these are going to be what, dance studios?
Yeah.
Okay, is there?
It's, it's Fusion Performing Arts and Dance Studios. So I guess the idea is to provide, you know, potentially even music orchestra-type practice. It's not an event site, but it is a, I guess a practice facility, I guess is.
Yeah, so individual's parents, can they rent out one of these areas if they need to, their, their child needs extra instruction or something, or?
Um, that, I'm not, I've never heard.
It's a private business, so it would go through the private business, I mean.
Right, I'm not sure what, all she has in mind for the, for the building, but, I mean, that, that's an interesting thought. Sounds like you could make some money doing that possibly, so. But yeah, I guess the, the only thing that I think I needed to convey, since it's not necessarily clear, is that this is just a, a place to perform, practice, hone your skills, condition and that sort of thing. It's not designed for any kind of, of presentation. There's no seating available for that sort of thing. I mean, there is going to be some like closed caption possibilities for people that are in waiting rooms or something, they can watch their kids that way or something, but she has off-site performances, including Gallagher Blue Dorn. I know she was just in Des Moines at some big performance, so that's where they do their, as far as big gathering type.
This is Meehee. You've kind of touched on it, but related to your five-stall parking deficiency is, you know, so is this typically a drop-off, you know, places? Can you, can you touch on how you drive to your, your parking requirements?
Yeah, I mean, currently the, the business is located above Jamison's, and I would say ninety, ninety-five percent of the parents, my understanding is, they pull up close to the area and drop their child off and then come back and pick them up later, and it's, as you might imagine, that's not a very convenient situation there. But I'm guessing that same, you know, unless there's a, a reason that develops in that area for people to stay, I'm guessing they're pretty much going to drop off, go home, come back, or go shopping, or whatever, they take that hour or, or whatever to do.
Thank you.
So I don't think, I think it'd be awfully rare for even half of those parking stalls to be used for more than just a few minutes, but.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Unless there's anything else you'd like to say?
Um, I don't think so. I mean, I think the concern with the emergency management that Eric was bringing up, I think that's well-founded, but I think too, unfortunately, that's, I mean, you can go all over town and those types of things aren't available there either, so, you know, I guess in my perfect world, there'd be some kind of federal funding available so that everybody had to have a shelter like that, but, you know, it's kind of way out of our price, price range to build some sort of a shelter onsite.
Yeah, this is Tyson again. I'm always looking for an indoor golf place to hit golf balls and stuff, so I don't have to bet, you know, they have to.
Go next door. That, yeah. Yeah, you can cross the street and do that if you want. For me hitting the golf balls, I ended up hitting the building.
This is Flynn, but I would think there would be alternative plan for that because I know in, like, school environments, when we were in phases of moving schools, we would route the kids somewhere else for an emergency management situation. So I would think there would be a plan for that if, and so needed, like, they could go over to the basement at Allen or, you know, under, something like that. I think there would be if.
I think that'd be fantastic if they were able to coordinate something like that.
Any of those buildings out there have basements?
I, I think maybe Allen facility goes across.
The medical park?
Across from where it is. And I was simply saying about the, the emergency management and needing a basement or needing a place where, like I said, in our, in our discussion, I said that we live in Iowa and we need to have that as a consideration, just generally speaking. Now, I didn't necessarily say we need to specifically have a basement or whatever it is, but you need to have an interior room or a storm shelter or a basement to consider that, but that, that's not necessarily your responsibility, that's the owner's responsibility.
Or a plan when the siren goes off, that's.
And I think the locker room would be a logical spot for that, but again, like you were saying, if you, if you try to designate something a safe room, then that's a whole nother liability that.
That's, that's, gets into building department and building codes, and that's way out of our, our purview.
Beyond my scope.
It's, it's not a bad idea to think about.
No, it's a great idea, I mean.
Okay, if there's no other questions for the, for the applicant, we'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Sue, seconded by Tavis, close the hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And now we will entertain a motion. If there's no further discussion, and if there is, we'll, we'll discuss.
I make a motion to approve the site plan amendment in the CP planned commercial district for the reasons stated by staff, with the condition that the site, the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera, except is specifically altered by approval of the site plan amendment. So.
Okay, it's been moved by Matt, seconded by Tavis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, and the chair votes in favor. That's Carrie, thank you so much. Do we have any discussion items?
I don't have any.
Okay, since there's no other business, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned at 4:36 PM. Thank you all.